All right, folks. It is seven o'clock, so I welcome you to the City of Colwood Regular Meeting of Council, Monday, October the 23rd. We acknowledge that we are meeting on the shared traditional lands of the Coast Salish people. And we are going to move through our agenda, but before we do approval, Council, Cindy Moyer is not available to do the presentation under 5.1. So I'm just going to bump that down into the Mayor's message. So it's not really changing much of the agenda, just the order of the agenda. So with that, looking for approval?
Second.
All those in favor? Posed, motion carried. Public participation time. It's time for those in the audience who might have something to address Council with. Happy to hear from you. So the microphone is there. Ms. Cullington?
It's very nice to see you all. Judith Cullington, 3338 Asmink. So I'm speaking on item 5.2, the Climate Accountability Letters. And I'm standing up to support, and I hope you will, support signing the letter. It's clearly, climate change is clearly something that's impacting Colwood. I don't have to tell you that. Sea level rise being a very obvious one, but so many other things, wildfires, potential in rural roadslands, windstorms that can blow over trees and cause damage to our residents, food costs because of what's happening elsewhere in the world. So it's, you know, it is a very real cost for us. So will signing a letter make a difference? I will be honest and say, I do not expect you to get a cheque from Chevron the next day. Even I'm not that optimistic. But I think it's really important collectively, as local governments, that we do show support for this kind of initiative, to show not only the fossil fuel companies, but other levels of government, that municipalities are taking climate action seriously and are aware of the costs and are looking for support in all of the right places. So it's nice to see Victoria, Sanich Highlands have all signed. I do hope Colwood will join. Obviously, it's also important that we as a city and we as individuals also continue to take our own actions to mitigate the impacts of climate change. Very pleased to see that Colwood now has electric cars in its fleet. Very nice. And I think Colwood has shown leadership in lots of other ways, and I hope that you continue to take it into account in all of those hundreds of day-to-day decisions that you make. So that's my spiel. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, David Grove, 3339 Wickheim Road. And the bakery, of course. Anyway, I'm here also to support the item of the letters. I believe clear and open communication is a good way of ensuring continued healthy life of our community. What better way to begin a dialogue with the fossil fuels industry than with this letter of accountability? I think it's clear and direct and pointed. It offers them a civilized opportunity to amend the harm caused, or at least begin a dialogue. So I support the council sending such a letter as a point of contact with these people. Thanks.
Thank you, Dave. Any other members of council or public?
Yes, Mayor Hamilton and members of council. I'm Lawrence Sergeis from 3159 Antribis Crescent. I too would urge you to support the letter regarding the effects of fossil fuel. I think that apart from the climate action implications, that we've heard that the effects of pollution on health are actually more catastrophic than the effects of wars and what we usually think of as leading causes of death. And it's been said that all governments local, we've seen, we've seen some fuel companies close stations, but we've also seen some moves to have, for example, EV charging at stations. So it's not about trying to put companies out of business, but urging them to see that they're in the energy business. They don't necessarily have to be in the business of fossil fuels, but they can be sustainable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Hamilton and members of council. I'm Hilary Mackey at the same address, and I also would urge you to sign the letter. And I think my, the other people who've spoken before me have said it pretty clearly, so I just wanted to lend my, my own voice to it. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name is Eric Doherty, and I'm a representative of the Council of Canadians' Victoria Chapter, covering all of Greater Victoria. And we're one of, on a national basis, we're one of the endorsers of this climate change letter and would urge you to sign it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Seeing none, then we shall move on. Next item up on our agenda is Mayor's message. And with that, I have a few things. One being, Council may, it's, we handed out a letter here. This is time-sensitive if anybody's interested. It is an invitation from the B.C. Community Energy Association's Climate Leadership Institute for a conference that is being held November 1st to 3rd over in Richmond. So they've asked for this to be received under information. And if anyone is interested in attending, the process is available in the email. Counselor Day?
Just a question. I know that I have a CRD commitment on the first. Just wanted to ask around the table if anyone was thinking about attending from Colwood, since it's only across the water.
Anybody, council? Any thoughts given to this yet? Seeing?
Not the last 12 seconds, no.
So I would need a motion to receive on that one, please?
Move receipt.
Seconder?
Second.
All those in favor? Posed, motion carried. Other item that I have on here is an interesting bit of information that came out of our green team that was down at the lagoon and did a big cleanup along there, as they do every once in a while. And they found 17 pieces of glass, 21 paper cups or plates or that sort of thing wedged in amongst the logs and what have you, 33 bottle caps, 42 food wrappers, 59 pieces of plastic. And topping the list were 2,240 cigarette butts and 14 cigar tips. Did a little bit of checking. So a cigarette butt, the filter piece, is made of a plastic called cellulose acetate and can take up to 10 years to decompose, plus the toxic nature of the tar and nicotine as it's been spread around. So clearly, while we may have done a really good job on some of those normal pieces of litter, there's a very large contributing body out there of smokers that are causing some grief. So let's see what we can do with those numbers to get them down lower in time to come. And I want to thank the green team for the many contributions that they make throughout our community, as well as many of the other communities in the region, for cleaning up in parks and different locations. I think that is it on my side. Anybody from council? Counselor Day?
Just, you may have noticed in the news today that there is a youth mental health clinic has opened downtown Victoria. And this is very good news. The Victoria Family Court and Youth Justice Committee has been lobbying to get youth mental health services increased for the last at least 10 years. And so it's quite exciting. It can serve youth up into their mid-20s, and they have psychiatrists and psychologists and assistance of all forms. So that can be a very difficult area to get a referral. Last time I checked in Victoria, to get a referral to a psychiatrist was well-nigh impossible. Wait lists were a year, a year ago, and this year, they simply didn't have anyone to refer to. So it's been pretty critical need. So I just thought I'd make everyone aware that should someone need that type of services, it's a wide-ranging clinic for youth, so it can help every kind of issue, from mental health to physical health to, and it is operated downtown to the Youth Empowerment Society.
Great, thank you. And now I'd like to call on Counselor Martin to stand in for me while I do the presentation part.
Absolutely.
So we'll just do, yeah, it will. So.
I would like to offer as a statue and my liking as mayor.
Yeah.
Nope.
Anyways, let me read for you. In that Cindy Moyer from Coast Collective could not be with us this evening, there's a token of their appreciation. "Thank you for support of arts, culture, and heritage in our community. All the best warmly from Cindy Moyer and Deb Nichol." So this, and you can go ahead, Counselor Martin, and open that. Deb Nichol lives in Parksville and comes into the South Island infrequently. Her story is that, like Carla Flagel of Qualcomm Beach, last year's first-place winner and other friend Michaela Schmidt, demonstrates the cultural tourism and economic development value of the Colwood Seaside Festival as a destination event. There were 25 registered artists at the plenary. Seventeen participated, only because the weather was just a little inclement that particular day. So the winners were Elaine Hughes, first prize, second prize went to Charlotte Bell, third prize went to William Watt, and the People's Choice was Linda Gordon. A special thank you to Van City Credit Union, who supplied the prize money of a total of $500. People's Choice won a night stay compliments of Holiday Inn, and the two People's Choice voters won $25 gift certificates for the tap house. The Canada 150 exhibition featured the plein air work, October 4th to 15th, at Coast Collective Art Gallery, with the opening Meet the Artists reception that took place Sunday, October the 7th. So this is presented to Colwood, and we will be hanging it in our building in a prominent place. It's artwork from Deb Nichol, so.
Sure. That is.
Well, let's do all of council.
We'll get all of council, get up here.
You want it in front or?
We'll do it. Yeah, we'll just do it in front.
Just a minute. Jump in.
I'm missing Gordy. I'm like, there's someone missing. I'll bear a take, too. Oops, no. Thank you.
It's a good thing I wore pants tonight.
Yeah. Usually, yeah, usually don't have any pants on, so. Thank goodness.
It's a lot of information. Moving on to item number four, then. Adoption of one set of minutes this evening. Folks, regular meeting of council on October the 10th. All those in favor? Posed?
I have a correction to make under the minutes, item 7.2.1, the driveway widening. I should note that I voted opposed to that.
Okay, thank you. With that, looking for adoption on those? Seconder was? Terry? Terry? All those in favor? Posed, motion carried. Presentations, then. There is one this evening, and I'd like to welcome Andrew Gage from the West Coast Environmental Law Association to the podium. Thank you, Andrew.
Laying my notes over top of this lovely art. Is there a remote or?
Getting in his way.
Okay.
First of all, I'd very much like to thank council for inviting me to give this presentation, as well as the residents of Colwood who have, have come out to speak their support. I am here to speak about the idea of a climate accountability letter and ask you to, in fact, send a letter. As was mentioned, Victoria, Sanich, and the Highlands have all voted to send such letters. Basically, the idea is a letter to 20 of the fossil fuel companies, 20 largest, describing the local impacts of climate change that are being experienced and will be experienced here, and then asking them to pay their fair share of the costs. So the climate change isn't just about polar bears and distant future impacts. It never really has been. It's about, you know, rising sea levels and coastal erosion. It's about multi-year drought here on Vancouver Island and forest fires in the chosen, as well as, of course, more serious forest fires and flooding in the interior. And right now, the assumption is that these types of impacts will be paid by us, by the taxpayer, by the communities, as they, as they pay to protect against coastal erosion or to deal with drainage issues, that that cost will be fully borne by our communities. And that's what gives you the jurisdiction, indeed, I would say, the financial responsibility to ask questions about what's caused those costs and whether they can be recovered or whether they should be recovered, from some of the parties that have benefited financially from, from the products that gave rise to them. Which brings us to a second reason to send this type of letter. I was 19 when the world's governments met in Rio and committed to avoid dangerous climate change, and since that time, the greenhouse gas emissions of the world have only risen. And I would suggest that that's to a large degree because we've kept the benefits of the fossil fuel economy entirely separate from the costs. We've allowed, we all have benefited to some degree. I don't deny that, deny that. But at the same time, industry and, and the economy have benefited certain sectors, and then other people are paying the costs. The public is paying the costs. And really, if we can't bring those two together, it's really going to be difficult to deal with climate change because the industry appears hugely profitable because it's not paying for the costs. We need new conversation. We need a conversation about the fact that the fossil fuel industry has played a huge role in causing climate change, and it's made hundreds of billions of dollars of profits in the process. No one's saying that this is just the industry, or that we don't have our, our role to play in tackling this problem. We are saying that they have played a significant role. The 20 companies we want you to write to, their operations and products have resulted in almost 30% of the greenhouse gas emissions in the global atmosphere today, the human-caused emissions. We need a conversation about how many of those same companies have responded to, ignored the warnings of their own scientists that they've, you know, they've known about since the 50s or 60s, and instead funded denial, funded misinformation, lobbied against action on climate change. And therefore, their impact on our economy and on our ability to deal with this problem has been still, still larger than it would otherwise have been. The initiative of sending these letters is supported by more than 50 B.C.-based organizations from across the province. And, you know, basically, we're saying until now, this, this industry has avoided any responsibility, any conversation about their, their share of costs and their responsibility. So what a climate accountability letter does is to simply lay out these costs that we're suffering and ask for the industry to pay its fair share. I've included a sample letter in your package that was just included as an example of what might be sent, not to be presumptuous and tell you what you should say. Maybe save your staff some time if you're, if we're, you know, if you do decide to draft something. Pollings indicates that 75% of British Columbians would support their local government sending a letter of this type. So it's a very high level of public support. And the letter, I think, creates a conversation not just between us and the, and your community and the, and the fossil fuel industry, but also a conversation that can be picked up by shareholders and investors, asking whether they're going to reply to those letters and what the appropriate fair share of the companies is. It's not, it doesn't end with just sending a letter. We did also, in our original open letter on this, ask, ask communities to consider the possibility of class action lawsuit against municipalities. Three communities, sorry, five communities in California, including San Francisco, have actually launched lawsuits against fossil fuel companies. We're not asking you to do that at this stage. We're just asking for a letter that doesn't commit you in any way to litigation. But I do note that 63% of British Columbians would support their local government in doing so. The truth is, the world's got a lot of work to do transitioning to a renewable energy economy, and that's going to be a lot more difficult if one industry believes it doesn't have to pay the costs of the harm caused by its products, that our taxpayers are going to pay 100% of those costs. Renewable energy can't be expected to compete against an industry that won't clean up after itself. So we desperately need this conversation. And so you have a responsibility, I think, to your citizens to ask these questions, rather than just passing on costs to them that are being incurred as a result of climate change and a result of the fossil fuel economy. And also, an opportunity as leaders to ask these difficult questions that go to the core of our fossil fuel economy, you know, without denying our role in that, but at the same time, asking this industry to step up and do its part to ensure that the true costs of the fossil fuel economy are reflected. And until they do, they don't have an incentive to come to the table and engage with us constructively and look at those alternatives. So I'd like to thank you for hearing my presentation. I'd welcome any questions, and I hope that you will support sending such a letter.
Thank you, Mr. Gage. First off, questions from council? Counselor Day?
Thank you. Really appreciate your presentation. I'm glad that we took the time to find out a little bit more, rather than just saying, yes, we'll, we'll send an accountability letter. It does sound like something that would make a lot of sense. Reading through your documentation, though, I think one of the most powerful arguments is that it will create some awareness in the industry that they will be required to pay at least some share of, and that that would create an incentive for them to do something differently. But once we send this letter off into space, is there anyone coordinating what we hear back?
So certainly, if you receive responses, we would love to know, and we would love to do things with that. Highlands, so far, is the only one who has received a response. They've received one letter so far, to my knowledge. And it was very much just, you know, acknowledging the concern, but not addressing the issue of costs at all. And what we are doing is we're reaching out to shareholders groups to invite them to raise these issues on the corporate end, you know, from, from within annual general meetings, to ask whether the companies will be replying. But that's, that conversation, you know, we need, we have more work that we need to do on that.
Thank you. Any other members of council? So at this, oh, go ahead.
Thank you. Sorry. I was just looking at the original. Can you tell me, did you provide a list or, I'm just reading this. In the first paragraph, you basically asked for us to send a climate accountability letter to the world's largest fossil fuel companies. And I'm seeing an example for Chevron.
Right.
But is, is somewhere in your collateral, the list of all the major?
Yeah.
Like, how do we actually contact these people?
Yeah, sorry, we, there, on our, on our website, I think, I think there's a link to it in the, in the detailed document.
And is it very, is it fairly direct for staff?
It's a spreadsheet with the addresses, mailing addresses, and the percentages that they have contributed, according to the research of Richard Heady, the scientist who's compiled these, these percentages. The only thing that's a little finicky, and I apologize, it's definitely something I can help, this, this, I'd be delighted to figure out how we can do that, is because some of the international addresses are non-standard, you know, they're, you couldn't do one mail merge that would fit everything. But it's, with that exception, I think it's all there.
Okay. Thank you. That's all. Sorry.
And I just wanted to be clear, Mr. Gage, that there is no ask right now to launch a class action or undertake that or whatever.
Absolutely. I think that's something that's going to require conversations between a few different communities, rather than one just stepping up to the plate. And, you know, I'm happy, you know, if at some point council wants to discuss what that litigation might look like, I'd be happy to talk about it. But no, at this point, we're just asking for a letter as a, as a way of initiating the conversation.
Because I know, you know, I mean, and part of it urging us to work with citizens and that sort of thing. You know, it's something that we have our minds eye on. We're undertaking an OCP review. There's a lot of climate change conversation happening around all of the aspects of that as well. And so, you know, I think we are on, on the page for a lot of the stuff, and our past practices have, have also been done with all of the environmental change about that's coming around there. So I'll leave it to council to make a reference, whether we want to have staff look at this and see what sort of a letter we might be able to come up with, whether, or what direction we want to take. Counselor Day?
I would move that we send climate accountability letters to the top 20 contributors.
Second.
Any further discussion on that? Counselor Noll?
Yeah, I'm happy to support the letter, but I do want to caution council that traditionally, when oil companies have been hit with price increases, they get passed down to the consumer. That means the cost of your food goes up because a good portion of agriculture is energy consumption and transportation. Before the meeting, I went and looked up what the oil companies are already paying. So a liter of gasoline in Victoria, as of January, there's a fuel tax of 18 cents, a carbon tax of 6.7 cents, and a federal excise tax of 10 cents. So 35 cents of every liter of gasoline is already taxed. And if that is the way the government chooses to address this problem, these are probably just going to get passed directly down to the consumers. A more constructive method, I think, would be for the government to put a corporate tax on environmentally unfriendly companies, to pass better laws on requiring minimal, minimum vehicle mileages. I mean, we built a car in the 70s that would do 57 miles per gallon. Those aren't around anymore. Why not? We should be doing a lot better. That's 50 years ago. So I do support the letter. I do caution that there is no simple solution to this, and it's been decades in the making.
Thank you. Any further conversation? Counselor Day?
I would just, I, I hear all of Counselor Noll's points for sure. There's lots of room for improvement all around. But if energy companies look to make a change in the way that they do business, they, they may, like us, be able to find ways to save energy, operate more cleanly, do things to mitigate the concerns that, that we have with the way they're operating. And I think, I think there could be a powerful incentive for some positive change from within the industry, as well as without.
Thank you. With that, all those in favor? Posed, motion carried. Mr. Gage, thank you. And all the rest of you, thank you. Moving into correspondence requiring council direction, there is a letter in our agendas that, from the City of Victoria, requesting favorable consideration or resolution of support for maintaining and improving intercity bus. So this is about the prospect of Greyhound bus services eliminating their island service. So, council?
There's lots of room for improvement all around. But if energy companies look to make a change in the way that they do business, they, they may, like us, be able to find ways to save energy, operate more cleanly, do things to mitigate the concerns that, that we have with the way they're operating. And I think, I think there could be a powerful incentive for some positive change from within the industry as well as without.
Thank you. With that, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Mr. Gage, thank you. And all the rest of you, thank you. Moving into correspondence requiring council direction, there is a letter in our agendas that, from the city of Victoria, requesting favorable consideration or resolution of support for maintaining and improving intercity bus. So this is about the prospect of Greyhound Bus Services eliminating their island service. So, council?
Thanks. I just want to speak up on, as someone who has often traveled by, by bus on the island over many, many years that I've lived here, and I think it is an important transportation choice that is sometimes needed, sometimes necessary, not always, I think, easy for the companies that are offering it to offer. So if there's something that we can do to support the continuing operation of bus lines that travel the whole island, I think that is an important thing to support.
So we have some options for consideration. Anybody want to put something forward? Question? Yeah?
So, looking at the original letter, or the, whatever this is, from, from Mayor Helps, it, she, she sent it to all B.C. municipalities and regional districts. And is she asking us to just send it to the province? What is, I guess, I'm not, I'm not sure on where we're supposed to be sending this letter of?
So we could either write our own letter similar to what they've written and do the same. I think this is going to ultimately end up on the B.C. Passenger Transportation Board desk, or we could write a letter to support the letter that they're sending, or we could take no action at all, is what we're looking at.
All right. I will make a motion that we pass a resolution expressing support for, basically, option three there.
Okay. Seconder? Conversation?
And just, I just want to be clear that the resolution from the city of Victoria is that they were calling on the B.C. Passenger Transportation Board to decline the application from Greyhound Canada to eliminate that bus route, including Victorian Animo, Victoria, Vancouver, and the route along the Highway of Tears. And further, that they would call on the B.C. Passenger Transportation Board, B.C. Transit, and the provincial government to explore the provision of bus service as a public transportation service in order to ensure long-term viability, safety, affordability, and connectivity between B.C. communities. So I just wondered, as a member of B.C. Transit, I'm just, the, the first resolution, I'm really good with. The second part of the resolution, I'm not sure how that would work. So I just wondered if maybe your perspective from B.C. Transit could help me with any clarity there.
So B.C. Transit has connector routes between a lot of the, the more rural communities. Seven or eight of municipalities up in Nelson, Fernie, that area, all collaborated and, and rescheduled their bus service and, and worked together to create that networking loop so that folks could get on and get to the trail hospital. That was kind of the driver behind it. So those kinds of things are happening. B.C. Transit, or the transit here on Vancouver Island, we just recently introduced a route from Duncan to the city on Saturdays. So it's a Saturday commuter route rather than just the weekday one. So they're expanding services. And this is just, I think, strengthening the, you know, the idea that that is an important part of, of how people get around. It's not always by car or other. Counselor Logan?
Thank you, Worship. Just on the motion, I, I drive to Duncan every day for work, and so I, I witness firsthand the challenges of commuter traffic coming into town and the benefits of the B.C. Transit, the B.C. Transit Service has on, on the commuter traffic coming into Victoria and likewise back. The only challenge, I guess I have, if this motion includes a resolution to decline the application from Greyhound Canada to eliminate the intercity bus routes, is not that I don't sympathize with, with the notion that they should maintain service. However, it's a, it's a private company that has some responsibilities as well to the shareholder, and, and I'm not sure that it's, it's necessarily our place to mandate a private company that is losing money on a route to tell them they must keep operating. You know, and I think if we did, it might be to the detriment of perhaps other services that Greyhound operates. So, you know, that, that's the only issue that I have, is the city or the transportation, the B.C. Transit, B.C. Passenger Transportation Board declining Greyhound's application, you know, being a private, a private service, private company, and I don't think it's within our mandate to be able to do that. However, I think B.C. Transit, in terms of service, should certainly be the, the option of choice from my perspective. Thank you.
Okay. Any others? We have a motion on the floor, so I will call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Opposed? Motion carries? Thank you. Next item on our agenda is into new business, planning report from Director of Planning, request to amend covenant C.A. 1809350 for 3580 Wishart Road.
Thank you, Worship. The report before you outlines a request from the developers of the property located at 3580 Wishart Road to amend the development agreement placed on the title of the property in the form of a Section 219 covenant that enshrined conditions flowing from a rezoning of the site approved in 2011. That rezoning permitted up to 27 townhouse units to be built. The development agreement required that there be conformance with the plans presented to the public at the time of public hearing, and they're attached as Appendix A. So pretty root or entry plans, but suffice to say, the, the plans have changed quite a bit since 2011, and Appendix B outlines the site plan that was included with the development permit application. So they're changing from a 27-unit plan to an 18-unit plan, and they're looking for flexibility with respect to conformance with that original plan. So they like to change the wording of that section of the covenant to, to allow this new plan to take place. They'd also like to change the wording with respect to sprinklers. The original covenant, which is on title, simply requires that the townhouses be sprinkled or be included with fire suppression sprinkler systems. They're looking to simply abide by the current building bylaw and our sprinkler regulations as it flows from that and as well as the B.C. Building Code. So that is the second change they're looking for. So as such, staff, support the application and recommend that it be approved as per Section 6 of the staff report. Thank you.
Counselor Day?
Thank you. Just a couple of questions for you. There is no change to the setbacks from the creek?
The setbacks of the creek, so there was a section of the property that was provided to the city to rehabilitate Victoria Creek. The setbacks, actually, in terms of the physical setbacks between the creek and the, where the creek currently sits, and the new construction, it'd actually get, be a wider setback. In terms of the setbacks that are specified in the zone, they would not change.
Okay. And it's, it's difficult, because I do understand the issue in terms of the sprinkler requirements. I had a discussion with the fire chief to clarify that for me earlier today. And it's my understanding that through building, potentially, according to the building code and providing fire separation, those goals can be achieved in a different way instead of with, with sprinklers, or maybe they will be with sprinklers. That's yet to be determined. But it does nothing to amend our sprinkler bylaw, which is beneficial. But what I do have significant concerns with on the site is the geotechnical aspects because there's, there was a number of lock blocks and preload placed on the site, and there was considerable topographical change as a result of those weights on, on the land. And I would like to be absolutely certain that anything that would be built there would have, our, we would be able to put our faith in its stability. So I'm wondering if there could be some geotechnical monitoring done, some, similar to what was to take place in Royal Bay for the monitoring of the sand slopes in, adjacent to the ocean?
Through the chair, the issues before council don't include geotechnical issues. How the city would approach these things would be through a development permit application that's already been made, and then also the building permit application. So geotechnical hazards are dealt with through those two processes. I can certainly take the concerns brought forward as input to staff, but we would be simply taking that as, as input at this stage. And if council wanted to make this as a requirement of the developer, we would have to find a different way to do that. It wouldn't be through the processes before council tonight.
Okay. Thank you. And I just, reading carefully the, the motion that's been put forward tonight, I can say that I'm, you know, I'm certainly not opposed to giving developers more options to meet the needs that, that we identify, such as sprinklers or, or firewalls, buildings. And I certainly, but I do have some concern with that, the design, the, the project, if you will, that's presented at public hearing being quite different from what we actually end up with on the ground. So I guess I'm trying to communicate not very clearly tonight that if this was a new proposal coming forward to me and I looked at this design, I don't think I would care for that proposal. I didn't care for the original proposal with the additional nine units on it. I, I am concerned for, for how that looks in the community. But overall, this evening, it does, the proposal does represent an improvement over what was offered before in that it is less dense.
Thank you. Counselor Day? Counselor Logan?
Thank you, Your Worship. It's not very often that we see a project actually decreasing in density. And so I, I think, along with what Counselor Day said, I think the community will probably be appreciative of the, the smaller scale type of project in, in that particular corner. Just want to clarify, Ian, that with this change, there is no impact on any of the other requirements, such as frontage improvements and, and any of the other triggers for amenity contributions, that sort of jazz, as a result of a decrease in the density.
So if I remember correctly, there are provisions within the zone that relate amenity contributions to the number of units. So there, I'd have to, give me, I mean, I could check the zone, but I suspect that there would be a commensurate reduction in the amount of amenities that we collect. In the grand scheme of things, it's not a major, you know, impact to the city's finances. And with respect to changes to the development agreement, it's strictly what's in the staff report. We're not looking at other areas being changed.
Thank you. Thank you. Through, through the mayor's staff, why did this not go to APC?
You know, we, we asked ourselves, should this go to APC? And the reason we brought it forward to council is because we're dealing with a previous decision of council, and it's quite technical in nature. You know, it's, it's not necessarily something that we see as being a major public issue, public interest issue that we want to bring to that, that larger group representing the community. However, that being said, council can refer this to the APC if, if council so chooses.
Thank you. Second question, if this was an increase in density, not a decrease in density, would this need to go to public hearing?
Through the chair, this application, if, if it was coming forward as an increase in density beyond what the zoning allowed, it would have to be a rezoning application. The provision that is being dealt with in terms of what's being brought forward for public hearing is what has to be applied for at development permit. That's something that we brought in, in the planning department as proposals through rezonings about seven or eight years ago, because developers would pitch a, a development at public hearing stage through a rezoning, and then we get the development permit, it'd be something very different. So this is a check on that process so that you have the opportunity to, to look at the plans and decide whether you want to proceed as the developer's proposing or require additional public process, such as a public hearing. The city could certainly hold another public hearing. It's not legally required. Staff's not recommending it this time, but that is a procedural option. But simply, it's, it's an opportunity for council to check in on the development now that there's been substantive changes.
Thank you. Third question, sprinkling. The, the original plan, obviously, the developer at that point accepted it since it was part of it, and now, in retrospect, is not. Why, why? Why, why? Is it, is it a cost issue? Is that why we're not looking at, at sprinkling? Or what are the reasons why we don't want to sprinkle the building?
No, I have to qualify this response by the, I'm not the planner that's directly dealing with the applicant on these issues, but I have been in, I've been at meetings where this has been brought up, and I believe there is a cost implication associated with this, with the sprinkling, not necessarily with providing the systems in the units themselves, but the, the related upgrades to the water service and whatnot. But they've got a, a development program that has these townhouses that are, that they, they're two units put together. So innate to that concept is a, is a form of development that may, that can avoid sprinkling. So that's an opportunity they're trying to leverage.
Okay, thank you.
So we need a motion on the floor, folks, to proceed?
I'll move the recommendation, Your Worship.
Seconder?
Second.
Any further discussion? Counselor Noll?
Yes, my biggest concern was this was going ahead without public input. However, I did go back to the original public hearing on this development, and there was no public input at the public hearing. So the neighborhood does not seem to be particularly concerned with 27 units. I can't see them being concerned with 33% less, though I will be supporting the motion.
Thank you. Counselor Day?
I just, just to add to, to, to the conversation, I certainly have heard from members of the community in regards to, to this development with concerns about the sighting of the entry. It's very close to the corner of Wishart and Victoria, and that is, according to the traffic studies associated with Royal Bay's development, an area of future concern. That intersection is supposed to fail fairly soon after Royal Bay gets more traffic going into their development from Victoria. So it is a concern, and it has been, I just, I'm providing the information to, to council that I have been approached by people who live in Royal Bay who are concerned about the look on their doorstep.
With that, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Unposed? Motion carries? Thank you. Next item comes under Finance and Admin, and we have a report from our Next item comes under Finance and Admin, and we have a report from our Acting Director of Finance in regards to our third quarter ending September the 30th, 2017.
Thank you, Your Worship. So tonight before you, we have a series of financial reports. These reports are summarizing our third quarter results, so ending September 30th. And my intention really is to speak to these reports high level, and I will address each project, and then I'm happy to answer any further questions. So the first attachment, Appendix A, this is an overview of all revenues and expenses per our amended financial plan bylaw. Now I'll just speak to some of the revenue highlights first, and then I'll go into the expenses. With respect to taxation, total taxation for the year has been levied, and we're within 1% of budget. Moving on to user fees, our user fees budget this year, it really is quite unprecedented. This is a reflection of the substantial development and building activity that we're seeing. We do expect to meet budget by year end. To date, some of the activity with respect to building has been delayed slightly, looking at some of the more substantial projects, such as Callwood Corners. And just last week, we actually issued our 500th building permit of the year, and I, from what staff have said, we haven't reached levels like that since the late 80s. And those, the substantial increase in user fees related to building and development, we're going to see that directly impacting our reserve fund contributions this year. Moving over to fines and penalties, we are on track to actually come in approximately $100,000 over budget. This revenue here is related directly to the 10% property tax penalty and the interest earned on overdue property tax accounts. And the primary reason for coming in over budget is that the financial plan did not include a budget for the 10% tax penalty. Moving over to our government transfers, the majority of that variance that you're seeing year-to-date relates to $1.5 million in gas tax funding that has not yet been recognized. The majority of the projects are still underway or have not yet been initiated, and once those projects complete, we will recognize the revenue for those projects. To date, we've collected 50% of the first two quarters of our casino revenue, and that is on budget. We are expecting to meet budget there. Moving over to our investment income, overall, we do expect that to hit budget by year end because we do defer a portion of that income that is earned on funds such as our deferred gas tax funds. And with respect to the developer contributions, again, similar with the permitting activity, some of this is simply just being delayed, and we do expect if we don't meet budget by year end, we will see those contributions in next year. And just about all of that activity there, those are direct contributions to the city's So in sum, with respect to the city's revenues, we do expect to reach budget by year end, and chances are, if we come in under budget, it is simply with respect to the gas tax revenues that are not yet needed until those projects are completed. Was there any questions on the revenue activity, or shall I just?
Yeah.
Oh, Counselor Martin?
That was a setup. Can you give us an update on where are we at with PILT and the relationship we have with the federal government? I know we were in a nasty contract or disagreement at one point. Is all of that resolved now, and is that moving forward resolved?
Yes, so with respect to PILT, so you'll see that back on the page one of 12 here. For the last couple of years, we have been budgeting based on PILT monies that have been collected. So our budget reflects approximately 95% of what we would expect based on BC Assessment's assessed values and our tax rates. So we're at 95% of what we would expect, which we have come a long way from where we were five, seven years ago. And that is in part getting the folks at BC Assessment, the feds, and we're working closer together, and we have those values so much more closely aligned. With this year's PILT claim, there was a couple of properties, that there's still a disconnect on the class, the classification of those properties, and we're just waiting to hear what the explanation is there. And then it's just a matter of either BC Assessment updating their information or appealing that claim with the feds. So no, things are not nasty how they were. I don't expect that we will even be making an appeal on this year's. I think it's, again, just a matter of BC Assessment's information on that one or, those one or two properties to just be updated.
Great, thank you. Can I, one final follow-up? And I realize the data might just be getting skewed because I'm looking, excuse me, I'm looking at 2017 budget, but I also understand that actual is only three quarters, correct? So that when I look at the interest that we budgeted 33,000, but we only got, we've only collected 16 to this point, we're still behind, if it's three quarters of the way through?
Yes, no, thank you for raising that point. So that interest line there, that is the interest revenue that the city earns on the overdue property tax accounts. And until a transaction on the property tax account occurs, our system doesn't recognize the revenue. So typically, what you see at year end is we have to book an adjustment to recognize for all those tax accounts where we have no activity throughout the year.
So just as clarification, then, thank you, as a follow-up, where would I find interest on the money that is sitting as of July 1st, when we got the money? So we have 13 million sitting in the bank somewhere until we spend it. Where's that interest showing up? Which line item?
If you flip over to the next page, that's our investment income.
It's considered investment income, okay, got it. Thank you.
Correct.
And we're ahead already?
We are, and that will jump again for the fourth quarter of the year. But then what is slightly misleading is we proportionately allocate our investment income between our operating funds, our reserve funds, but then also our deferred revenue. And so at that point, we do defer a portion. So we end up coming back in closer to budget.
Counselor Day?
Thank you. Just given the political climate with the federal government, there are a number of properties in Callwood for which we receive payment in lieu of taxation that could potentially be sold or transferred to other owners. And we may no longer receive either taxation or payment in lieu of taxation. Do we have a reserve fund to help us acclimatize to that type of change?
We do have our Future Operating Expenditure Reserve Fund, which we have historically used for one-time instances such as that. And that will also definitely be something we will want to consider through this year, the 2018 budget process as well.
Great, thank you.
Counselor Knoll?
Just a practical question here. Why is this coming directly to council instead of the Finance Committee? We haven't had a Finance Committee meeting in months and months, and it seems to me this would be an ideal thing for them to be discussing.
With the presentation of our quarterly results, this information really is for information purposes and to provide the feedback to council, who considers the budget earlier on in the year. At this point, we made the decision to bring the information directly to council. And I think in part, and this also speaks to the move for the change in the committee structure, often we find ourselves up against tight timelines, so we have to wait until our quarter ends. And this month in particular, this really was the earliest that we had this information available. And we were hope, the Finance and Admin Committee meeting was scheduled to meet last week, I believe, which we wouldn't have had this information prepared in time.
Thank you. Motion?
Oh, I think this is just the, you've got to get into expenses. So in general, so what you're seeing in Appendix A is both your core and your special project operating expenses. And in general, all departments are well within their core budgets. We are looking at approximately, if we move to, to page 12 of 12 on Appendix A, we have approximately 33% of the core budget remaining. For the final quarter, you would hope that you have at least 25% remaining. Now that being said, we do have a number of seasonal expenditures, so that's causing that percentage to be slightly higher. The only real major variance that I did want to highlight was with respect to the corporate. So I'm on page four of 12 here. Council passed a resolution this spring to provide a grant to the Greater Victoria Housing Society for an affordable housing project for up to $220,000. And that grant has not yet been paid out. We do expect that to happen next year, and so that's why we're seeing that variance there for the corporate core expenses. If we move over to the next page, financial services in particular, we have a number of year-end costs that we will see realized this quarter. We have our year-end audit as well as an evaluation done by a third party on some of our year-end figures with respect to our liabilities. With respect to human resources, council did approve this year the hiring of one full-time equivalent position in the form of an HR manager, and that position has not yet been filled, and we do expect to fill that position next year. Moving over to protective services, the property service costs related to the RCMP, that's at year end, we will typically do an accrual for any net building costs we see on the West Shore Detachment Center, and that accounting work hasn't yet been done. The fire protection budget, there is still approximately 35% remaining in that core budget. In part, that's related to some year-end activity that happens with respect to the volunteer program, as well as the budgeted turnout gear for the year hasn't yet been purchased, and there's a substantial portion of the department's training budget remaining at this point in time. And moving over with respect to the building inspection, a substantial portion, I shouldn't say substantial, but more than expected of the salaries and benefits remain, again, that was with respect to the approval and hiring of two part-time building inspector positions, and that just occurred later than anticipated in the budget. And moving to page 10 of 12, with respect to our Public Works and Transportation Services core budget, the materials, goods, and supplies includes a number of seasonal items, as well as our major roads budget of close to $150,000, which has not yet been spent, but I spoke with the public works manager last week, and he does expect that we will incur those And that more or less is the overview of revenues and expenses. So our financial plan did require that our revenues exceed our expenses by $3.8 million, and that was in order to fund a million dollars in debt repayments, budgeted transfers to reserves of $2 million, and capital projects. We do expect that we will generate somewhat of an operating surplus this year, so we will likely come in closer to 4, $4.5 million in surplus. So we do expect we will make all of our budgeted transfers to reserves and generate somewhat of an operating surplus. And this is, of course, independent of any amortization expense. We don't budget for that, and nor has that been recorded to date. Happy to answer any questions on the expenses, and then we can jump into the project review.
Counselor Day?
Just, there's a professional service costs associated with each department. Is that where we hire outside professionals, or could you just explain what that category means?
Absolutely. So that is where you will see budgets that include consulting budgets, legal fee budgets. For financial services, for example, you'll see our audit budget, you'll see any financial consulting budgets.
Thank you. Anything else? No, I think we're okay.
So Appendix B is a summary of the special projects that were approved in this year's budget. And what we mean by special projects, they're intended to represent the one-time operating expenses of the city. Now, overall, we are expecting that the majority of our special projects will complete on budget by year end, and I'm happy to give just a high-level run-through of each of the projects. If you have a look, there are notes that explain where we are at to date as well. So with respect to general government services, council did make the decision this past year, we moved our events budget into our core function. The waterfront branding and promotion, that is a multi-year project that we have been working on. This year's budget represents funding for interpretive signage that we are currently designing with consultants right now, and we do expect to have ordered and installed by year end, primarily down at the Esquire Malt Lagoon. The third project there, the public art project, so actual expenses on that, that relates to the commissioned Driftwood sculpture that you've seen down at Esquire Malt Lagoon. And the remaining funds, I've spoken with our communications manager, and we do intend to spend those on some street banners that we're currently designing. Moving along, as I mentioned, the HR manager has not yet been secured, and we expect to fill that position next year, and the budget related to that position has been moved into our core operating budget. Similar with the next line item, the two part-time building inspectors, those positions were filled, and that budget and actual are sitting in our core budget. Note six, the uniform replacement for bylaw, those uniforms have been ordered, we expect to finalize that order later this month, and those should be delivered in the next month. The next project has been a major undertaking for staff. This is related to our official community plan and our land use bylaw review, and that, the official community plan is currently in draft stage, and it's being circulated with city staff for feedback at this time. And we do expect that the land use bylaw review will be carried forward to next year. The next project, the subdivision and development bylaw, that is in progress, and we do expect to complete that by the end of this year on budget. The asset management project, that has been initiated, but we definitely do expect that that implementation of asset management will be carried forward to next year, in part tied with securing Finance Director. The next project, the coastline erosion study, currently requests for proposals, closes later this week, and we have requested that this study complete December 2017. The draft DCC bylaw, we do expect that to complete this year, and public consultation to occur in 2018 portion of that project will carry forward. The next project... The next project, this fall, the city did identify the need to fund a study for a park and ride facility on Suk Road adjacent to the West Shore Parks and Recreation Center. And that project is in progress, and we do expect it to complete later this fall. The $5,000 playground grant, that was paid out to Callwood Elementary School this past spring as a contribution towards their playground equipment. The funding for First Nations outreach, that still remains available, and I've spoken with our CAO, and he expects that it will carry forward to next year. And again, another FTE that was approved in this year's budget was a parks labor position. That position was filled, and both the budget and actuals are realized in the city's core operating budget. And so that's a summary of the city's one-time operating projects. Happy to answer any questions or move over to our capital projects.
All good.
So moving into capital, we are currently undergoing some renovations here at City Hall. We expect the final piece of the current planned renovations, which is with respect to our front counter design. We hope to have that work completed mid to late December. There's a possibility that will carry forward. We did purchase and install a computer room air conditioner. It is much cooler in there now. With respect to our financial software budget, that budget primarily related to the need to reconfigure our software to accommodate our new charter of account structure, as well as updates needed to the city's budgeting software. Final piece of that project will be the implementation of a new time card solution that's offered by our current software provider, and should be a much nicer fit than what we're currently using. And we expect to have that project and the new software rolled out by December of this year. Protective services capital projects, the parking lot project at the fire station, the repaving there, that work has been complete. The replacement vehicle for Fleet Number 50, otherwise known as the chief's vehicle, that has been ordered. We expect to have the invoice and have the vehicle sometime next month. The next three line items all relate to replacement of vehicles. Each of those vehicles were replaced with a Nissan Leaf electric vehicle, and those all came in under budget, in part due to rebates that the city received. And lastly, there was a $5,000 budget to outfit the storage container. That was the joint purchase between Callwood and View Royal for the storage container that I believe is over near the seniors center at West Shore Parks and Recreation. I've spoken with our emergency coordinator, and I think the intention was to outfit it with some beds, and those were all in demand with the wildfires and everything that happened. So he expects that we may end up incurring that expenditure next year when we're able to secure that. So moving into our engineering, public works, transportation-related projects. The $15,000 budget for fencing and stair rail, that's related to stair safety railing at Lookout Lake and on Fulton Road. Quotes on those projects have been received, the work orders have been issued, and we expect those both to complete on budget this fall. The generator for City Hall, that contract has been awarded, and we do expect that that project will complete within budget by the end of this year. We had to replace two electric vehicle charging stations, and that work has been done and under budget. We replaced yet another aging fleet with an electric vehicle, so the city purchased four electric vehicles this year. The Machosen Road budget for the $140,000, that's not the project that you're seeing over near Royal Bay Bakery, but this is the creation of bike lanes between Suk and Wishart Road on Machosen Road. And the work order has been issued for that project, and we do expect that project to complete by year-end. The $60,000 transportation upgrade budget, that project relates to the installation of sidewalk where Veterans Memorial meets Latoria Road, the installation of some sidewalk on Latoria Road on the east corner. And that project has been put on hold. It did require some blasting, and we would have had to trespass onto private property, and the city was unable to secure permission to do so. So that project has been put on hold. The close to $1 million road improvement project on Machosen Road, as I'm sure you know, is well underway, and we do expect that project to complete by December, and we expect it to complete on budget.
Can I just hold you there for a second? Counselor Martin had a question on a previous.
No, so this one that we're looking at right now, so capital projects, engineering, public works, and transportation services. Under actual, you've got $175,000 that's been spent, but there's nowhere close to that showing in the columns. It's only like $40,000. So I'm wondering, what am I missing here?
Sorry, what agenda page are you on?
I'm on, God. Well, what page is this? I'm on two of five, three of five, and what page is this on your computer? So it's 175, but there's only like 40.
On page two, which you don't have, is the start of the list.
You're missing all this part.
Thanks.
Yeah, sorry, on page.
I found it now.
Okay. So where were we? We were on the road improvement project on Machosen Road, and the city has applied for a federal grant on that project, and we have not yet received word on the status of that grant. The $150,000 budget, I'm sure you've seen that work underway as well. That project is well underway. This is with respect to the installation of a signalized crosswalk on Veterans Memorial at Havenwood Park. And again, we expect that project to complete on budget by year-end. The bridge repairs, there was just alerts issued, I noticed them on social media today, that work is expected to carry on at Esquire Malt Lagoon this week. And that budget you tend to see almost annually, depending on the necessary works that are required. So just flipping over to page 57 of the agenda package, continuing on the engineering, public works projects. We have an annual traffic calming budget. Again, you tend to see that year to year, and our city engineer has informed me that they do expect that project to be deferred pending completion of a traffic calming policy. The speed reader sign budget there, that relates to purchase and installation of speed reader boards just next door, Wishart Elementary. Those have been ordered, and installation is expected this fall. Again, we expect to complete that project on budget. The pedestrian signal purchase and installation, that, the design work related to that signal for the intersection at Machosen Road and Wishart Road is complete, and we expect the installation to occur this fall. And again, the project to complete on budget. The safety upgrade work that's occurring at Lookout Brook Dam, that is a multi-year project that involves consultation, currently stability analysis. Engagement is underway with Golden and Associates, and we do expect a final report from those folks by year-end. The bus stops budget, you tend to see that annually as well. This budget relates to funding for the installation of a bus shelter pad at Lagoon Road, excuse me. And these budgets, it's typically the city will fund the bus shelter pad, and then BC Transit will fund the actual shelter that sits on top of that pad. The wayfinding signage, again, this has been a multi-year project. This year, we're looking at the plan development and design of wayfinding signs currently that will direct pedestrians and cyclists to the Galloping Goose Regional Trail, as well as other trails and parks throughout the city. And I have seen the draft version of some of these signs through our communications manager, and we do expect to have those signs ordered and installed by year-end. And the streetlight upgrades, again, that's a multi-year project, and that is simply the replacement of our current streetlights with LED lights. And the 2017 project is well underway, and we expect that to complete by year-end. So that's a summary of the engineering-related projects. I'll move over into parks reculture. Again, we have more signage. We are looking to design and install some park signage, primarily at Callwood Creek Park and Havenwood Park. And those signs are in design process, and we expect those to be ordered and installed by the end of the year. The Callwood Creek Water Park, that was a two-year project that related to the purchase and the installation of the spray and play splash pad, and also all the drainage rectification work that was done, and the installation of a water fountain. So over the two years, 2016, 2017, that project had a budget of approximately $80,000, and we completed it just under that budget. The next project, the $6,000 budget for Herm Williams Park, that is with respect to the purchase and installation of a water fountain. And I've spoken with our public works manager, and we do expect that installation to be done by year-end. The next three line items all relate to replacement fleet and/or equipment, and all of those have either been purchased and are in service, or Unit Number 89, we expect to have that ordered and in service next month. And so what I just rattled off there, those were all the capital projects for our general operating fund with respect to our sewer, sewer, sorry, general capital fund. Moving into our sewer capital fund, one of the biggest projects in our financial plan this year was the expansion of our Callwood Central Sewer System. I just spoke with our city engineer a couple of weeks ago. At that point, we were just waiting for the delivery of the pump station pieces, and then the installation of that. And that project is expected to complete by year-end and to complete on budget. And we do expect that we will start taxing for that area starting next year. The next project, the pump station relocation project, that is a multi-year project. This is with respect to the Ocean Boulevard Pump Station, and we do expect that project to carry forward to next year. The John Deere equipment replacement has taken place. That piece of equipment is in service. And the last line item there is with respect to the need to replace the current software that we use for our sewer flow monitoring. And we do expect to have that software purchased and installed by year-end. Happy to answer any questions on the capital projects.
Another go at it, counsel, anybody with questions on overall? Counselor Martin?
Thank you. I don't actually have any questions specifically about the finances. I'm sure you know, you're probably pretty good at doing this. So I guess it's more from a theory standpoint, is, can you, and I realize you might not be able to answer this, and I don't know, I guess it's going to be Helen, because it's going to be engineering. The pump station relocation that we budgeted $275,000, but the notes are saying we're only going to spend $30,000 for this year because it's a multi-year project. So obviously, the first question is, well, why did we budget $275 if this is a multi-year? The second is, if it is a multi-year and we have budgeted $275, does that mean that the difference, so let's say minus the 30, so let's say it's $245,000, is that going into a reserve then, so that it gets covered in next year's? Or is this just going back into general surplus? Or what's happening with that specific line item?
I can speak to this line item, high level. The funding for this year's portion of that multi-year project was gas tax funding. So that funding simply sits as a deferred revenue source. It sits as a pot over here, and we just draw down on that when we actually do the work. So that.
The whole $275 is?
Yeah. Yeah, the whole $275. So that will just sit there. And I do know that the $275, that budget was representative of this year's intended works for that multi-year project. And with respect to why we're looking to carry it forward, my guess is in large part due to the fact that we've been focusing on so many other projects and getting those well underway, including the central sewer expansion. But I can absolutely follow up with specifics.
No, no, I was just curious why we budgeted that much for it if we never had an intention of spending it. The other question I have, and I guess through the mayor, I'm going to direct this to Pat because there's no Ian. I'm incredibly skeptical when I look at our capital project plan, and there's one percentage that we're 90% not complete. We're only 10% into it so far, and we've got less than two months. Now, I realize that there's outstanding bills and everything else, but I have a very hard time believing that when we're that far, that we've only spent 10% of our budget, and we're looking at two months left in our fiscal year, that we're actually going to hit these benchmarks. And I guess I'm looking through the mayor to staff to explain, all the notes are suggesting that everything's going to get done. I would prefer to be told that, no, we just don't have the time or ability or staffing levels to actually get it done, than to tell me something to say, hey, it's going to get done, and then come January, February, we go, well, we just ran out of time. So my question to you is, how realistic are these notes? Are these notes realistic that they're actually going to get accomplished, these projects?
I'm happy to speak to the notes because I compiled.
I kind of feel like this is Trudeau telling his finance minister, just to sit down, I'll answer all these questions.
Hi, May, just before the acting director, through you, Madam Mayor. We do have to remember, though, we are only reporting up until the end of September. There's a lot of stuff that's taken place in the month of October already. Projects are being done, and they are moving forward, but we're not reporting on any of the money that we've spent during the month of October, because this reporting does only take us to the end of September. So a lot of the stuff really is in the works and really moving forward. We just can't report on that yet because this report doesn't go that far into the year. I'm sure the acting director can add more.
All of these explanatory notes were based on discussions with the respective directors. The bulk of the activity, of course, is with respect to the engineering and transportation. And I know that our city engineer has been reporting out on these projects to the respective committee. That being said, yes, we are three-quarters of the way through the year, but the majority of these projects don't even get started until the financial plan is passed, unless they've been in the prior year's financial plan. So the work is often loaded on the back end of the year. And I.
Listen, if it gets done fantastic, and I don't care when it gets done, I'm just saying, and I just see there's a ton of work that still needs to get done, and we're two months away. And I'm reading all the notes going, nope, this is going to get done, nope, this is going to get done, this is going to get done. And I'm like, do you guys really want me to pull these out at the end of January and go, hello? So I'm asking now versus asking at the end of January.
And we absolutely will be bringing updated information on the status of these projects in January when we're looking at our year-end figures.
We have a recommendation before us here, folks. Can I get somebody to move in a second?
Move the recommendation, Your Worship.
Any other questions to staff? Although in favor, opposed, motion carried. Thank you, Jen. It was good to see all these updates. Moving on to a bit of a debrief on our Callwood Seaside Festival. Staff, Ms. Marcy, you've got that one?
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. The Second Annual Callwood Seaside Festival and plein air painting competition was held at Fort Rod Hill National Historic Site on Sunday, September 17. at Fort Rod Hill National Historic Site on Sunday, September 17th, from 10 till 4:00. Despite the rain, Parks Canada staff reported that 1,600 people attended throughout the event. The intent of the event was to hold a fun, all-ages celebration of community, arts and heritage. The event included a plein air painting competition, where 17 painters created works on the site, live entertainment with three bands, vintage dress-up selfie station, horse-drawn carriage rides, food trucks, kids' crafts and activities, mascots, heritage walking tours, interactive displays, wool spinning and tintite photography, sorry, fire truck, free shuttle service on the trolley was provided to and from the site from West Shore Parks and Rec. A magician entertained the participants at the event. Royal Bay students dressed up and took on the characters of General Arthur Curry, James Douglas, Francis Rattenbury, James Dunsborough, and a young Emily Carr. Cookie decorating station, children built bridges out of gun drops, families enjoyed getting caricatures, poem readings, sorry, spinning wheel for prizes, taking shots on the net with the Victoria Shamrocks, making crafts and playing games with team members from the Victoria Grizzlies, and also some people signed out books from the library. The approximate cost of the event was $11,000. If council would like to hold another seaside festival, it is proposed that the event be held on Saturday, September 15th, from 10 till 4:00. Staff would like to take the opportunity to make an application through the Canadian Heritage local festivals, building communities through arts and heritage, and a requirement of the grant is that the event must be held for more than one day. In collaboration with Fort Rod Hill, it suggested that an afternoon high tea be held on Sunday, September 16th. And the recommendations in the report before you, and that's it. Thanks.
Any questions to Marcy, and/or we have a recommendation before us?
I just have one question. The September 15th, have we looked at, is there any conflicts? Because I think there was like, there was Loxton Fair happen the same time this year, and I'm just curious, have we looked next year to see if the 15th is competing with anything in the West Shore?
UBCM is earlier next year, so I was trying to coordinate it so council could be a part of the event. I believe Loxton is that weekend as well, but in September, there's always an event on every weekend, so it's kind of a hard thing to judge.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Recommendation before us there, somebody to move in second? Any other discussion? Counselor Nault?
Just curious where the funding for this will come from for 2018?
Hopefully from the grant.
Funding, isn't it in core?
The city does have a core events budget, which was used as funding for this event this year. So the intention is certainly that there would be some funding in that core budget, and the hope is that the budget for this event could grow, should this grant application be approved.
Any further questions? All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries? Thank you. Ms. Marcy, I know you did an awful lot of work in getting that together, and the weather wasn't all that great, but we'll do our Sundance earlier, and 1,600 people, though, in spite of the weather, was pretty awesome. Moving on to item 7.2.3, we have a report from Counselor Day in attendance at the UBCM, and I want to start off by saying to Counselor Day, thank you very much for taking time to put this all together and give a bit of an overview on the kinds of things that we undertake when we are there participating.
Thanks. There's, I just tried to highlight some of the events that I participated in, and I found this year was particularly informative. They did hit on a number of hot-button topics within our community. Certainly affordability of housing is an issue for every municipality, I think on Vancouver Island. Even some of the northernmost ones are talking about affordability, because they're talking about economic development at the same time. And what was really interesting was that there was a number of speakers on that subject. They all seemed to be economists from Simon Fraser University. I may have missed one fellow's actual affiliation, but he was certainly also a professor, and a number of, I didn't, I spared you all the pictures, because that's how I keep track of what I did, is I take pictures of their slides so that I can remember what was going on. But what was really interesting was that it was not a made-in-Canada problem, and that globalization has really moved not people, but their money to different areas. So investors from China, Singapore are coming and investing in real estate in B.C., and it's very interesting, because certainly the statistics were a different picture than what I would have thought of Vancouver, in that incomes are not keeping up with the cost of living in Vancouver. They highlighted that one of the most common choices they think millennials are going to begin to make is that decision to not take the promotion in Vancouver, instead to take a lateral move and move out of the core area of Vancouver and to a more remote part of B.C., where they can work at a job that pays about the same as what they're making now, but which has a much more affordable climate to live in, which is actually putting pressure on every municipality in B.C. as a result of the pressure that's being felt in Vancouver with housing affordability. And they also linked the cost of transportation as a very key factor in affordability. They called it a molecule of affordability. There was the wages that you make, what it costs you to own your home, and then also what it costs to get to your place of work. So it was very interesting. There was also a session on advancing local government and First Nations relations, and I'm proud to note that we have just begun recognizing that we are meeting on the traditional territories of the Coast Salish peoples. And, you know, many communities have undertaken a year of reconciliation, and with the federal government showing more interest than they have in many years now in pursuing better relationships with First Nations and potentially settling more modern treaties, there was a lot of discussion about what additions to reserves might look like, and how well they might be received in your community. And so it was interesting. The discussion was that B.C. has, where was it? B.C. has 51% of all the Canadian reserves located here, and we have only 3% of the land that's been allocated to First Nations here. So very little land, large population to serve with that small amount of land, so additions to reserves with modern treaties will be impacting all of us. The other item that I thought was especially topical, because it's been so much in the news lately, was new approaches to the overdose crisis, and the slides were, I don't even know what word to use to describe it, we are slammed. It was bad before, it is 100% worse. The statistics from 2016 are 10, the statistics are tenfold of the year before. So, and fentanyl is the number-one problem, and so the new, I don't want to get her name right, the Honorable Judy Darcy was there, who's the new Minister of Mental Health and Addictions, talking about opening up more facilities for people who want to have a continuum of care to overcome addiction. And they were also talking about what might help, and naloxone was talked about quite significantly, as being that it's non-addictive, there's no reason to want naloxone other than to detox, and that more and more people are being trained on naloxone, because it's saving lives. And there was also courses that are being developed for frontline workers, which might very much affect our RCMP and our fire department, who are first responders, because there's a lot of frontline burnout, so they're doing a lot of sharing of resources of how to take care of number one, first and foremost. And lastly, I'll just tell you about Terry Mulescu, who was a very genial keynote speaker on the Wednesday of the conference. But what was really interesting, you know, he was very entertaining. You'll recognize him as a news correspondent for CBC Radio, or CBC Television, and he, you know, he's been a Middle Eastern correspondent, he's kind of been everywhere, done everything. And he really got onto the topic of fake news and the credibility issue that that fake news has brought to information and information sharing, and the seeds of doubt that it has sown with so many people. And he specifically talked a lot about Facebook and Facebook ads, because they are sold by computers, over the computer, and there's no way to, there's no way for you to know if somebody wanted to put out a negative ad targeting someone in your neighborhood, they could target particular neighborhoods, and the people who aren't targeted would never see the ad. So you would never know, there would be a whole war waged with no awareness of that it was even happening. So this was very interesting about the way the world is going, and since education and awareness of the facts is one of the keystones for democracy, it was pretty interesting discussion. Also met with Kathy Peters. We've received a number of letters from Kathy, making us aware of human trafficking, which is modern-day slavery, and is very active, and it's supporting organized crime, and our kids are very much at risk. And through the Family Court and Youth Justice Committee, we'll be working to bring some awareness-building events to, hopefully to Royal Bay High School, maybe through Teach Meister Theater. We have some great films to preview to help at least plant those signs to warn kids and warn parents and caregivers that there are sharks in the waters out there, and we need to know about them.
Good. Thank you very much. And just on that last one, Kathy, I do have that video and information, so we can work and get that one going soon. Any comments, questions, anybody want to add into it? Thank you for your time. Moving into transportation, public infrastructure, report in regards to a proposal to close a portion of Seafield Road, and I understand we have our engineering department here. Helen, you're going to take this one? Thank you.
Thank you, Your Worship. This report brings forward a proposal to close a portion of Seafield Road, and this would be consolidated with a development property at the corner of Heatherbell and Seafield, and a new section of Seafield Road would be dedicated. This follows zoning amendment that was recently approved, and the plan for the zoning amendment showed a proposed subdivision layout, and it implied that the road exchange would be approved. So we are looking for direction from council to proceed with the road, preparing a road exchange agreement, and a road closure and removal of highway dedication bylaw for that portion of Seafield Road. And since we don't have a fee, a standard fee, we are also asking that we could obtain a security in the amount of $5,000 to cover expenses related to this work, such as legal fees and newspaper announcements. And once the road exchange document and bylaw are prepared, that would be brought back to council for approval.
Thank you. Any questions to staff? Counselor Martin?
Thank you. Can you expand on the timing of when the road would close and when the new road would open, and how would people living in Seafield or in Ocean Grove get into their complex if Seafield is closed?
Until, through the, here, until the new road was dedicated, the closed road would have statutory right-of-ways placed over it, including a stat right-of-way for public access, and all the utilities would also have statutory right-of-ways. Once the new road was ready, was built and ready to be dedicated, then the old road, the stat right-of-ways could be taken off of the old road.
Thank you, just as a quick, so, and I don't think you've said anything wrong, so I'm just saying it back, so that I heard it correctly. So that Seafield will never be closed in one, in one version of it. So residents aren't going to have to go all the way down to Portsmouth and around to get access to their properties. Okay, great, thank you.
Anybody else? We have a recommendation before us, somebody to move in second it? Counselor Nault?
About that, a kind of cellic way is currently a T-intersection, and now it looks like it's going to be all the way through and then left down the new Seafield. I'm sorry, but my agenda just won't come up anymore. I love this thing.
You're going to touch the wrong button, and you're in something else, aren't you?
Yeah, see, if you look at the, if you look at the new plan, you see the new Seafield Road comes up, and then you do a right turn, and then a left turn to get onto Seafield. I'm concerned about access for things like fire trucks and so forth, or moving vans. That looks like a really awkward corner for that kind of vehicle, and there aren't an awful lot of alternatives to get into that area. So I'm wondering if engineering has had a good look at the design of that road?
Through the mayor, I was under the impression that any roads, planned roads, would be reviewed for, I think it's called WB15, or for fire truck access, before any approval would be given for creating new roads. I can't say for sure if this has been reviewed for that.
Staff?
If I could just add to the engineer's comments, the plans for the road had that jog built into them from the outset for street calming, for traffic calming. There's a park right at that corner, so the idea was we'd be able to slow traffic down through the alignment of the road. My understanding is that the engineering staff are undertaking a review to make sure it meets our standards for alignment, as has been stated, primarily for emergency vehicle access. But it was part of the intent of this road that it'd have what we call Voon Earth Design aspects, and that was actually part of council's resolution at the time.
So I guess my question is, is us proceeding with this exchange pre-
So I guess my question is, is us proceeding with this exchange premature if we don't know that the road is going to work for emergency vehicles?
Let's just say that I, I don't think we would proceed or recommend proceeding if this did not meet our standards for the turning template for emergency vehicles. I can certainly take this back to staff and confirm that, and then it would, there is a process flowing from this. This is just the, the green light essentially for staff to undertake the disposal process, and, you know, it's the first step in, in multiple steps to see this through.
And again, I think I would feel far more comfortable from a council and transportation standpoint if we had the road plan before we proceeded with getting rid of the existing Seafield. So I think what I would propose is this be tabled until such time as we have a road plan that we are assured by engineering and fire department that will work. And I would so move.
Staff?
Just, just wanted to offer an option for council. In the interests of not creating a delay for the applicant, staff could look into this. I apologize for not, for us not being able to confirm that this check for the turning template has been completed. I am pretty sure that that is the case, but certainly staff can take input from council, and then before we proceed with the next step of this process, come back to council if that's required, if, if that check's not been done. I do have a plan that shows the road as it's been proposed since the, early on in this resounding process, and the applicant is here with copies if council wants to see the, the plan of the road. And as I said, we can, moving forward, check in with council if there's any issues with alignment.
Counselor Knott?
I would still be, prefer not to proceed with this until we have assurance that the road is adequately designed, so my motion I will leave on the table.
Okay, so that would, would the information and plan be available for our next meeting? Is there, or is it going to be something that's going to take longer than that?
I suspect it would take about five minutes for me to check in with engineering staff or for us to just ensure that's happened tomorrow, so certainly.
Okay, so our earliest would be in two weeks unless we want to craft a, an additional point to the recommendation, and we'd have to vote this one through first, that would include having staff be assured that it follows what coun, what council's direction?
I'm just playing back.
Yeah, I know the wheels are going, I can hear it.
And I can, I can see in my head the WB fifteen turning template on a plan that I reviewed, not for the turning template purposes, but so I'm, I, I hate to not be one hundred percent, but I'm ninety-nine point nine percent sure that that turning template has been applied. I can't speak for the Director of Engineering, but, you know, I just, I just want to put forward that this is something that staff's looked at, and I just, certainly if council wants that one hundred percent confirmation, we can provide at the next meeting, but I am almost nine, I am almost one hundred percent.
Ninety-nine percent isn't going to cut it. So we have a motion on the floor for us. Let's call the vote on that one and see what comes out of it, and then there may be an opportunity, you know, one way or the other, if we have to strengthen this particular one that's on paper before us. So with that, if there are no other questions to staff at this point, I'll call the question on tabling this until staff can get it back to us, that we can have the discussion, and that will be at our next council meeting. All those in favor? Opposed? That motion fails. We can now go to the one that's before us and do something with that or something different? What's your desire?
Your Worship, I would be satisfied to add another point there, a subject to point, subject to the satisfaction of the engineer, that applicable road standards are met, but please fine tune the wording. I think you got the gist of, of what the intent of was and some of the council's concerns.
Seconder?
I'll second.
Any discussion? And, yep.
If we could clarify for the, for staff's clarity in terms of the wordsmithing. So was the main issue the emergency service alignment to allow for emergency service vehicles?
That, that, well, I mean, that's certainly an important factor, but, I mean, there's a lot of residential component down there. Someone with a moving van, which is probably perhaps larger than a emergency vehicle in a lot of, I, Counselor Knott brought up some good points of, of vehicle traffic in there, so we have to be sure that we're not creating a problem in this.
So it could be as simple as the, the subject to the proposed road design allowing for the passage of larger vehicles such as moving vans and emergency service vehicles to the satisfaction of the Director of Engineering?
I'm getting a slight head nod from.
Snowplows.
Snowplows, there you go. Yeah, yeah, climate change, stuff happening. Counselor Martin?
Thank you. I, I, I think we're getting too far in the weeds here, to be honest. I, this is, this is just going to build a bylaw that's still going to have to go to public hearing and everything else. So I, I, I think staff can dot their i's and cross their t's and everything before it even makes it to public hearing. So I think this is just a process of getting it going and getting the discussion starting, started, not that it's ending here. So I, I, I would say let's just move this forward and then let staff do their work. I don't think they've ever planned a road where it didn't meet the requirements, so I have faith that they will figure that out, and, and let's get some public input on this.
Thank you. With that, call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Thank you very much. Uh, next.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor. We did have a mover and a seconder on the table with the amendments proposed by Counselor Logan.
We did.
Is that intended to stay in there? Was that your intention?
Which?
When we were talking about having a subject to the satisfaction of the engineer?
Yep.
That was intended to stay?
Yep.
Thank you.
That was the cleanup of Counselor Logan's words. Thank you to staff for that. Moving on into bylaws, council, number nine point one, bylaw number one seven zero two, for first, second and third readings for Callwood, Maine Sewer Local Area Service Bylaw Establishment and Loan Authorization, number five nine eight, amendment number sixty-one.
Move introduction?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried?
Move, what are we, second now? Move second?
Yep. And a second, second?
I forgot how to count. What comes after one?
Any questions or comments on it at this point? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Third, please?
Move third. I'll be enthusiastic today.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Moving on then to nine point two, bylaw number one seven zero three, again for first, second and third readings, Callwood West Sewer Local Area Service Establishment and Loan Authorization, bylaw number six two five, amendment number forty-six.
Move introduction?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried?
Move second. Second.
Any discussion, comments, questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried?
Move third.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Uh, by, our number nine point three, bylaw number one seven zero four, for final reading, City of Callwood Highway Naming Bylaw through Royal Bay Sector.
Move final.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Bylaw number one seven zero five, again for final reading.
Move final. Oh, I'm so against this. Uh, second.
Um, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? There is no in camera, there is no release.
Move adjournment?
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Thanks, folks.